Good evening and welcome to the January 12th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
[inaudible]
Here?
Here.
Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There are none, we are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the January 12th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
[inaudible]
Here?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes to accept and approve. Those are the minutes from the December 20th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. At this time, if any member of the public would like to approach the podium, please identify yourself by name and you may address the board.
Hi, Liz Brown. I came out for a few reasons, but the first reason I wanted to come is to thank you from the bottom of my heart for prioritizing these kids to stay in school. I think I speak for most of the parents in the district that we are so, so very happy for your guys' leadership, that our kids are back to school after Christmas break. I know it was an easy decision for you guys. I know that the cases are so high all over the place, but you guys have found a way to do it, and I just want to tell you, we really, really, really appreciate it. And just two examples of just how great from everyone, from, you know, the custodians to the vice principal, to everyone helping out. You know, I know every day at Harrison Avenue, when one of our custodians was out, we had Officer Mike, our SRO officer, directing traffic every day and greeting our kids into school. My first grader today told me, oh my God, guess what? I had Ms. Bagnolo as my lunch aide today. So, the amount of real dedication and everyone stepping up to do each other's job is just amazing, and I just really wanted to say thank you to Lou Yu, the Board of Ed, to all the administrators, and obviously every single teacher that's working so hard. I know it's a really difficult time, and I just feel like we can't only come here to complain about stuff, we have to come and also give you guys the credit that you deserve. And the second thing is just, as always, I want the kids out of masks eventually. I know it's not going to happen, you know, in the foreseeable future, but I do know that as you guys start to collect the data of how many children have had COVID recently, you know, maybe that can be part of your arsenal to go to the state and say at some point, we could take the mask off. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Good evening, everybody. Randi Capola, how are you? I also am grateful that the kids are in school. I think that's great. I'm sure you have a lot to unpack, given all the changes, recent changes in protocol and what the state has said, and now what the Westchester Board of Health has said, and it was five, and now it's whatever, you know. You have a lot to unpack. I have some questions with regards to specifically, which I'm sure is going to be addressed. The state is saying now that they're backing off of contact tracing, and it's, you know, your personal assessment or your own thing, and nothing was made clear of how that's going to trickle down to schools. So, if... And they said an update was supposed to be released today. I didn't see anything, so I don't know if you have any news on that. Shaking heads, I guess not. It should only make sense that it would follow suit. If the rest of the state is not going to be contact tracing, then hopefully that can trickle down to the schools. The state also said, you know, now if you are fully dosed, whatever that means now, if it's three shots, four shots, I've no idea, you can be in close contact with someone who has tested positive, but yet you may ride the bus, you may go to school, you don't have to test, and you can participate in your extracurriculars and sports. So that was one change. And then it was the... I'm losing my train of thought. Similar to the test to stay. So a student who is not vaccinated, my understanding is the program is to keep unvaccinated students in person in school. So if a child has been contact traced and they are asymptomatic, they may come to school and test every day, and as long as they are negative, they may participate in school. But then, they may not participate in anything else. I need to know how you've been equipped to answer that question to parents, to make it make sense, because that's not equity, and that's what we're about, right? That's not... That can't be okay in anybody's mind, especially when we're saying, you know, it's almost like a punishment, it's almost like a form of discrimination, because vaxxed or not, you can still catch it and spread it, and I think that's undeniable, and that's not something that's really up for debate anymore. So, to turn around and say, "Come to school, you're negative, that's awesome, in-person learning, fantastic, now get out." How is that okay? You know, I need it to make sense. Your advocacy has obviously made some differences, that the state is, you know, taking notice, and, you know, that's all the superintendent's... I mean, it was Lowry who just said now, he doesn't know what any of this means, you're waiting for more direction with regards to contact tracing and the like. I know, I mean, in my heart, I have to believe that teachers, administrators, nobody signed up for this. Nobody signed up to be the contact tracing police, and, you know, you don't want to spend half your day doing that. We're here, all of us, parents, educators, to give our children an experience, an experience that comes once in a lifetime. That's it. You get to be a kid once, you get to be a middle schooler once, you get to be a high school student once. And while I think, again, to Liz's point, we're in school, kids are there, it's great, we can do better. We can do better if these are the parameters that are being set. So the advocacy now needs to be that. Are we really being equitable? If we are saying, "Because you didn't take this, you can't be here," even though you're negative, and you're doing everything else that you need to be doing, you can't be here. That needs to change, and I really want to know how you've been equipped to answer questions to parents like myself and many of us in the district, to make it make sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close public participation. I have a couple of updates, and I know Dr. Wall will be addressing many of the...
Actually, everything.
Everything that was raised in both his update and presentation we will be making. I want to apologize. One of my favorite parts of this meeting is getting to share good news. Unfortunately, my good news was not attached, so I just ran quickly through Twitter. I have a few things to share, but I will have a full report of all of the excellent things that are happening in our schools at our next meeting. I do want to share some incredibly exciting news, that we had three of our Harrison High School students who were named Regeneron Science Talent Research Scholars. Not only is it fantastic that three of them were named, but there were just 300 of them named, and to have three from one high school is just really fantastic. So, huge congratulations to Mai Blaustein, Katie Flieger, and Kealan Vaswani. They each received $2,000 scholarships, and the school each also received a $2,000 donation in recognition of each of the three of them. And we have invited the three students to come to our next board meeting, so that we can congratulate them in person, and hopefully we'll have the opportunity to hear from them about the original research that they are conducting, and which allowed them to receive this incredibly prestigious award. So huge congratulations to them, and also to the entire science team up at Harrison High School, the science research team, and all of the science teachers who do a really incredible job.
A particular shout out to Allison Blunt and Dr. O'Keefe, and what they are doing with that science program is just incredible. Lisa and I were looking at high schools of double the size who haven't come near three candidates. So we're just so proud of the kids and the teachers. This is amazing, in this environment, to pull that off.
We also have some exciting news regarding our incredible student athletes. The breaking news on the Husky Twitter feed was that the varsity girls' basketball team now ranks in the top 25 in New York State, which is very exciting. And not that it's all about beating Rye, but sometimes it is, and I will say that the girls' varsity basketball team beat Rye 52 to 33 a week ago. So congratulations to them. Our girls' student athletes are doing incredible work and having incredible performances, also in our indoor track and field team. They won the league title. We had a number of student, of our athletes in track and field placed first at the, let's see, long jump, Megan McGurk, high jump, Amy Goble, in the 1,500-meter dash, Katrina Turelli in the 300-meter dash, Eva Cephaloni. And we also had first-place finishes in the 4x800 and the 4x200 relays. We had a number of second-place finishers in the 600-meter dash, Annika Turelli, and in the high jump, Mary Gilmore. And also at the league championships, the boy, in the boys' 600-meter, we had the second, third, and fourth-place finishers, which is pretty fantastic. So congratulations to all of them, and as I said, I will have much more good news, because really, that's just the fun part of this meeting. I also want to echo the comments of both of our public participants, and thank, on behalf of the board, particularly all of the administrators throughout the district. The amount of time that they are putting into doing things that none of them signed up to do is absolutely remarkable. I had the great pleasure of speaking to Kim Bukma on New Year's Eve, because I had COVID-positive situations in my house, and in speaking with her, and her patience, and her effort, and her understanding of what needed to happen in my house, I know that that's happened in hundreds of phone calls across the district. So, "thank you" is hardly adequate for the work that has been happening, but "thank you" at the moment is all we have. So, to the nurses, all of the administrators, and as you say, the flexibility that is being shown. I saw Mr. Galano up at the JV Boys Basketball Game, and he said, "Well, I'm running a middle school, and now I'm up here doing my other job."
And he's doing a good job, too. Don't tell Scott.
So, I'm sure there... This is not easy, but the fact that everyone is continuing to do it and just pushing on. And I also want to thank Dr. Wall and Dr. Leidwig and everyone involved in making sure that school opened. We know how incredibly important it was for students to get back. I've referenced before that I have a meeting once a month with presidents of other boards of education in other school districts, and there was some surprise reflected when I shared. We share sort of what different districts are doing, and, you know, so that we can hopefully learn from each other and help. And I think we may have been, we are one of, I think, maybe two or three districts that are allowing children, if they're in a home where someone has tested positive, but they have not tested positive, to choose to zoom in. There are various reasons why a child might, or a family might decide that that's the best decision for them, but most districts are only allowing children to stay at home and zoom into school if they've actually tested positive. I personally can't understand that. I also know from personal experience, and we've all been through this, how incredibly difficult it's been to actually get a test. So, our goal, as we've said, I think at every meeting for the past two years, is to keep kids in school, to give them the experiences that they deserve and want, and if we can, whatever way we can find to get them to stay connected to school, whether it's zooming in when they need to, or being in class when, which is where we want them, we're going to keep doing that. But thank you to all of them. It's really beyond, so. With that, Dr. Wall?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. I promise you, every question you raise is not only on my mind, it's part of the presentation tonight. We feel your pain and your frustration. I just want to start, though, by echoing something that Kelly said about my leadership team. I do call them mine, because I feel they're almost like an extended family. I have six principals, assistant principals, and I'm going to say this, and I want you to hear me. Every single one of them, every single one of them was working on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day. There was no downtime. There was no downtime. And there were moments when we were all wondering, Dr. Leidwig was monitoring it by the minute, the number of COVID-positive cases in the district was threatening to close us. And so the other group I need to thank, because it's not always understood how we do what we do, and it's really because we behave as if everybody can make a difference, and they do. Our teachers are basically doing their own jobs and the jobs of their sick colleagues. We have teacher aides, Mr. Cartwright would tell you, Mrs. Heims is here tonight, Mr. Guttermann. Without our aides and assistants, we would not have been able to keep schools open. Our nurses, and I really commend Dr. Leidwig, because they need a pep talk every day, you know, and to be fair to them, we were the first district to implement the new standards today. Most people forestalled till Thursday. The nurses found out about 15 minutes before you did, because I found out about an hour before they did. But our goal is to try to keep kids, as many kids as possible, in school. Get them out of quarantine, get them out of isolation, and get them back to school. So I know I said this before, and it's certainly not meant to say that people are deliberately doing this, but we all need to just breathe in and have patience for the people that are overextended. My greatest concern on a day-to-day basis is how am I going to keep the morale of my teachers, my aides, my custodians, my administrative team afloat, absolutely afloat, and they have been extraordinary, and I thank them publicly, and I hope you do, too. And on a personal note, you know, my mom passed away the day after Christmas, and I don't share that for sympathy. I share it to say to everybody, you have no idea what a phenomenal community we have. The number of people who reached out to me on their holiday break, the number of colleagues, parents, administrators, who found time to attend my mother's wake the two days after Christmas, it's evidence of the kind of kindness that lives among us all the time. And I want to remind you of something. I am not a maudlin person. My mom lived to be 91. I'm grateful to have spent the last day of her life with her, but the lesson that I take from my mother is the lesson that gets me up in the morning. And I've shared this story before, but I think it's worth repeating, especially right now, when we're all so tired. So my mom comes from abject poverty. She was one of 15 children raised on the south side of Mount Vernon. She was an incredibly talented woman. She had, she was a gifted writer, she could sing, she could play music by ear, she was an amazing seamstress, though you saw her picture in the newspaper, she made the blouse, that was her 16th year high school picture. But I will tell you that my mom suffered, as many kids do, from not being fully seen by her parents, who were pulled in so many directions, and by not having resources. And she suffered with that emptiness her entire 91 years. She never, ever got better. And I tell this story because it's important for us to remember what we do that is different. The goal of this organization is predicated on the idea that we see your kids, and if there's an emptiness inside of them, our work is to try to fill that up. Because here's what I can tell you unequivocally: Kids don't heal from that scar. It follows them everywhere. They never get better. And so when I wake up in the morning, what makes me proudest is this is a school district that truly believes, and lives to the extent it's humanly possible, that all means all. Whether you're a custodian or the superintendent, there'll be somebody there to help you. Whether you're a child who started with everything, or a child who started with nothing, we're going to level that playing field for you. And I remind you that every day that we live our lives, there's a lesson to be learned. Anytime you extend that affirmation or that kindness, you don't know how much you are changing the life of someone, a child or an adult. So just one, that's a big thank you to this community for, again, wrapping your arms around me in a very difficult time. So, let me transition now to what we are facing, but I don't want tonight to be about, "Oh my God, Omicron is here," because we're going to lay out a plan tonight to get back to real school. It's going to get better. We're not going to close school unless somebody makes us do it, or unless it's impossible to staff the buildings. So everybody needs to breathe a sigh of relief about that, because I've heard that rumor out there. That is not happening. There are things we can do together to make sure that happens, and we're going to talk about them tonight. We're going to ask my esteemed colleague and very tired friend over there, Dr. Leidwig, to climb himself over to the podium, and we're going to start with some pretty shocking statistics, and you'll probably be even more amazed that our teachers and our administrators were able to keep the place open. You're on, Dr. Leidwig.
Thanks, Dr. Wall. We've tried to share information in a timely way with the community, whether it's changes to protocols, things that we learned late-breaking, as we did last night from the Westchester County Department of Health, or it's information about our Test to Stay program, or about data on COVID cases. And I will honestly share with you that it has been a real challenge since Thanksgiving, but in particular since the holiday break, just to keep up with managing that tracking of data. So, I just want to share with the public that, and with the board tonight, that we work really hard to try to make sure what we present is complete and accurate, of course, to the public, and we're mindful of all of the different data sources that we have to consult to get it right. And so we'll try to consolidate some of that today for the ease of making it digestible. And I'll just start with a little bit of data, and then share why it's challenging to paint as accurate a picture as we would like. So, one of the sources of data that we report to is the New York State COVID Report Card, and this is a screenshot from that as of yesterday. And this information reflects the lab-confirmed COVID cases that have occurred in our school district. This is district-level data, and this information is available at the school level as well, if you click through, and we're going to be sharing information with the public on how to access that information. But since the start of this school year, we had 311 confirmed lab confirmed cases, 55 teacher cases, and 42 staff cases. You can see 408 total. And then it breaks down in the last 14 days, the last seven days, and then new positives as recently as a day ago. And as you can see, the numbers are high, but it doesn't really tell the whole story. And the challenge here is, this is just lab-confirmed cases. So, when our nurses are fielding phone calls, which they do not only during the day, throughout the day, but well into the evening as well, we also have to try to account for home tests, right? Because as many people know, it's not as easy to go find a test. You call your doctor's office, they say, "I'm sorry, it's not available," and so people are taking home tests, as we understand. And they can give us a positive indication or a negative indication, but we can't rely on that data for Westchester County Department of Health purposes. But we track it nonetheless, because if there's a positive case, we don't want kids to come to school. We also will get data from our Test to Stay program, where we have kids coming in to stay and avoid quarantine, and we'll pick up some positive results there. Our surveillance testing also produces some positive results as well that we're trying to track. We also have the Department of Health contacting us to say, "We're reporting a case to you that you may not be aware of." We also get what are called presumed positives, so a multiple constellation of symptoms, but a person can't get a test, there's a point at which we have to consider them positive, even in the absence of a positive test. I share that not to glaze you over, but just to say that it's challenging to present a super-accurate picture of the data. So what we're going to be relying on going forward is the data that's publicly available on the COVID Report Card. We're going to be sharing a link with how to gain access to that, and it'll be on our website as well, and it'll look like this, and it'll be broken out by school as well. Just since December 23rd, the day we went on the break before the holiday, we, if you aggregate all of those cases and the types of reports that I just shared, we've actually had 458 positive students and 78 positive staff, just in that time since December 23rd. And again, sharing that information to say that it's, you know, it's widespread, and we're not unique, it's widespread throughout Westchester, New York State, and beyond. We're grateful that people are not getting terribly sick. That's good news, but we're seeing high case counts. Dr. Wall, you mentioned absenteeism and the challenges associated with that.
Yep.
We, on January 7th, which was last Friday, we had 120 absences in faculty and staff in the district, and 60 of those were teachers. That's about one in every five teachers in the district was absent, either getting a test, dealing with their symptoms, having tested positive, whatever the case may be. And so I just echo the really exceptional work that principals have done, making sure that classes had a caring adult there to supervise kids and to teach them, our aides, our assistants, our nurses, our teachers, phenomenal work.
Yeah.
So, moving on. We did something coming out of the break that we thought was important, which was conduct what we call either gateway or surveillance testing. I don't like either of those terms especially, but the idea here is, we seek consent from students, their parents, faculty and staff, to provide PCR saliva-based testing to everybody that is willing to give us that consent. So we had about 969 students, faculty and staff participate, coming out of the break, who provided us with a saliva-based sample that we could send off to Mount Sinai Labs. We had 108 positive results that came as a result of that. That was an 11% positivity rate, and these were asymptomatic individuals that had come to school, you know, obviously in good faith, coming out of the break, provided their sample, and lo and behold, weren't aware that they were positive. And so we took steps to contact trace, as many of those cases as we could, and that's when we talk about the hours that principals and assistant principals spend, it's to try to make sure we're doing the outreach and contacting families to let them know. This slide disaggregates the data by school, positive students, positive faculty and staff. You can see 98 positive students and 100, excuse me, 10 positive faculty and staff distributed across the schools. And one of our goals, and I know, Dr. Wall, you're going to talk about this more in a few moments, is the idea of the value of doing widespread recurring gateway testing, so that we're collecting data on a recurring basis about the presence of COVID in our schools, because we know that if we can identify positive cases and isolate them, so that we risk the spread of transmission in our schools, that's one of the very best strategies to keep school open. So, next week, we will be inviting all of the parents and their children, faculty and staff who've given consent, that number's now over about 1,800, and we'll be inviting them to participate in weekly COVID testing, at least for next week, and we're working with our testing partner to make sure we can do it week over week thereafter.
And just to pause there, Dr. Leidwig, we saw an uptick, thanks to your help, and the principals, too. We did a lot of outreach, and we had a lot more people sign up since school has reopened. So we've increased the number of people who are going to participate this by almost 400. It's not closed, but you won't get into this round. You need to sign up, so we get lead time, so our provider can get you into the system to do that, so.
Great. And just to provide a brief overview of some of the guidance that came out as recently as last night, we get a lot of emails, and I understand every one that comes our way. Parents want... parents wondering, well, the CDC has said this, and it even seems the New York State Department of Health has said this, and how come Harrison hasn't adopted that standard? And what happens is, that information gets promulgated, sometimes at the federal level, at the state Department of Health level. It has to be authorized by the local Department of Health. There are lots of opinions and research-based ideas that come to us and toward us, but we have to follow what the Westchester County Department of Health advises. So yesterday, late afternoon, evening-ish, actually, about 5:30, we received the authorization from the Westchester County Department of Health to adjust some of the quarantine and isolation guidance. So I'll go through that quickly here. I'm certainly not going to read all of these bullets, but notably, the isolation requirements have changed substantially. Up until yesterday, it was, if you tested positive, you had to isolate for 10 days. Effective last night, now effective today, that isolation time is now reduced to five days. And students, faculty, and staff can return to school after five days of isolation, provided that their symptoms are improving and that what we call productive symptoms, coughing and runny nose, are resolved, and they're fever-free for at least 24 hours. And if that's the case, we can welcome kids back after day five. That's a great step toward normalizing the school experience and getting kids back to school. We've just developed something called an end-of-isolation reporting form, so that when students reach that five-day point of their isolation, parents can just confirm for us that those symptoms are improving, productive symptoms are resolved, fever-free for 24 hours, and then we can welcome kids back. We're not requiring a doctor's note, a doctor's visit. We're asking parents to give us that reliable information. In addition to that, it's also advised by the County Department of Health that after five days returning to school, but it's still advised inside and outside of school, that people who've tested positive continue to wear a mask between day six and day 10. It's possible that individuals can be marginally contagious at that point, and so it's a caution that the County Department of Health has advised to ensure that others are safe as well. And of course, in our schools, we require mask wearing, so that's consistent with our practice as well.
Just a pause there to, go ahead. Any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask a question. I read through all of the, everything the county sent yesterday. Am I correct that there, there is no change to their requirement for student athletes who've tested positive? They still can't participate until 10 days after with a doctor's note, correct?
So, right now, as it stands, if a student is isolating for five days, at the end of five days, when they can come back to school, they can also come back and participate in extracurricular activities.
It was silent on that question.
But it was, it didn't refer, I guess, that I...
There was additional guidance that came out from the New York State Department of Health, that the Westchester County Department of Health has not authorized yet.
Right.
And that guidance says that if you're vaccinated but not boosted, and you have an exposure, you can come to school, but you have to quarantine from extracurricular activities for five days. That's not in...
That wasn't adopted.
Not adopted by Westchester County. We understand they're seeking more guidance on that question, but right now, that is not the law of the land in Westchester County.
So just to be clear, for this moment in time, your understanding is accurate, that kids, well, maybe it's not. Right now, even though it was silent, the agreement that Westchester County superintendents came away with on this particular question is, after the five days, you can participate in athletics, which was different than what Section 1 was saying. So we're trying, later on, you'll learn that I have a meeting tomorrow with the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Education to say, can you please clarify what these rules are, because we're all losing our minds? But right now, the answer to your question is yes, in this moment in time.
And I raised that question, and it'll get into what you're going to say later and what I will raise later as well, which is that most of what Dr. Wool and the Board of Education, myself, Mrs. Kozak, have been doing for the past, probably, I don't know, five days, and also two years before, but particularly five days, is to try and advocate for clarity on all of these. The unfortunate thing we're finding is that schools aren't, school districts and leaders are not being involved in these conversations early enough where we can make them clear, we can make the people making these decisions understand the ramifications that they don't understand when they're making the decisions. So the question about sports, they clearly didn't even think about it when they issued this. So now the county has said five days, and they still have some documents out there saying, you need a doc, you can't do anything for 10 days, and you need to go to see a doctor before you participate. So they've raised just a whole nother set of...
Well, and I don't want to jump around, but I know Brian's going to get to this, but it speaks to Mrs. Koppold's question. So you actually tested positive, and now you're able to come out after five days and play sports, but you were exposed, and you're testing every day, but you're not allowed to play sports. So the answer to that question is, that hasn't changed. But one of the things we're going to try to clarify tomorrow is, how does that make any sense?
So, moving on to quarantine, there were some important changes here as well. Similarly, where it was 10 days of quarantine for students, that's been reduced to five days of quarantine. And that is for unvaccinated students. So if you're a vaccinated student, you don't have to quarantine following a close contact. But the county of health rules are that if you're unvaccinated, you have to quarantine for five days. During that five-day quarantine, though, students can participate in test-to-stay.
Right.
And we have a robust test-to-stay program set up here in the district, and that's testing for the first five days of, well, five days of quarantine, whatever those school days are. And the rule still stands that during the test-to-stay program, those five days, that those students unfortunately cannot participate in extracurricular activities. We've challenged the county on that very question and looked for clarification on the guidance. But as it stands today, that's the guidance. Could be different even as soon as tomorrow. We obviously...
Yeah, lots of things are moving parts, so we're giving you the rules as we understand them at this moment in time. And Brian's doing a really good job of trying to tell you where we are now. We believe some things will change likely by the end of the week. We don't know what yet.
I think it's also worth pointing out at this point that most other school districts that have implemented test-to-stay have completely limited that program
That's right.
...to children who have been exposed to COVID in school. Now, when we were having a conversation about that, it, we couldn't understand that as a decision, because we've had essentially no student-to-student transmission
We have no test-to-stay program.
...or adult-to-student transmission in schools. We wouldn't have to run a test-to-stay program if it was just because a child caught it in a school building. That's not happening. It also struck us as just not the right thing to do. Why would you allow, well, why would you essentially not run a program? But why wouldn't you want every child to have the opportunity to be in school if they can? So I, that's not something I think most people are aware of, but most other districts aren't letting students who are exposed at a sleepover or playing sports outside of school or anywhere else participate in their test-to-stay program. They have to stay home, and they don't have the opportunity to be in school.
And we did struggle with that question, and let's be completely transparent. Brian and I worked with the principals on thinking about this, and as you pointed out, it would be a very narrow band of kids that would benefit from test-to-stay if we were applying the rules that other places are applying. But we do rely on people to be honest, because what the law contemplated, the rule, the thinking was, it's very difficult for some people to isolate a child from other family members in their house. So as we've said throughout, our ability to keep schools open depends on us being able to count on one another, playing by the rules we all agree to. And for the most part, I have to say, you know, people are working really hard at doing that. But that was the thinking behind it. We, we operate from a different perception. We believe that most people will do the right thing, and hopefully, we're going to be proved correct.
What are the quarantine goals for children that are unvaccinated but have COVID?
You're going to get to that, I think. Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't remember what you mentioned. So you asked a question, and as it all didn't make sense, you just got dropped.
Correct. I promise you, we can't do this, because it will just, but I will, somebody will speak to you after the meeting. When I'm done, you will understand what we're proposing, which is vastly different from what we're talking about. And also, I think you'll understand that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes advocacy that I've been engaged with, that hopefully will get the state to pay attention to some of the things we're talking about, which are, the goal here should be, how many kids can we get to school safely? Everything else is irrelevant. And we think we have a lot of evidence, somebody pointed out, that, you know, there's virtually no cross-infection in our schools. There might be some, but virtually, the reason for this spike is vacation. It's not what went on in our schools. Actually, when schools open, infection rates are much lower. But we are going to, we've looked at everything we can possibly look at. We think we have a few pivot points that will make a difference, because remember, the goal is to get back to normal. Dr. Liedwig, I'm sorry.
Sure. Just a few comments about the test-to-stay program. It's now been up for a few weeks and with some good success, and we're really pleased that it's been able to help us keep kids in school.
Lots of kids.
Even straight away from the first day of what would have been quarantine, kids are able to come, get a test in the morning before the school day, and then continue throughout their day to attend classes. The question has come up, if a, and so Ms. Brown, you asked this question, whether or not a student that's tested positive in the prior 90 days, are they obligated to participate in the test-to-stay program? Actually, if you've tested positive, it's very possible that you could continue to show positive for 90 days, even if you're not contagious. So the guidance is not to continue to test if you've tested in the last 90 days. So we know that, that can give us what effectively constitute false positives.
And that would also be true, Dr. Liedwig, if you participate in our randomized surveillance testing, right?
Yes, that's right. The instructions that go out with the randomized surveillance testing indicate that if you've had COVID in the last 90 days, please do not return your saliva sample, because it could very likely show a false positive.
Positive, even though you're not contagious.
The other question that's come up is whether or not parents can complete their test-to-home test at home, or test-to-stay test at home. And unfortunately, again, the guidance that we are following from Westchester County doesn't permit that. It would certainly be less of a burden on our school nurses to say, sure, bring your negative test in from home, but we're required to have a licensed medical provider provide that. And of course, our registered nurses have that expertise. And then, again, just reiterating that until we get that change, students are considered quarantined outside of school. So it's really just a mechanism to allow students to attend their academic classes during the day, but we're hoping, again, to see a change with that in the near future. So, Dr. Wool, I'm going to hand it off to you to transition to the next question.
Yeah, do you mind just sticking around, though?
Of course.
Okay, thanks. So, the picture on my right, those of you that remember, that's the picture that was my backdrop for our first Zoom session after we had closed school full-time. A dark day, it was, it's an empty playground. And I was thinking about how I wanted to start tonight, and that was for me, I don't know about you, yeah, I don't know about you, I was heartbroken. We were having a great year, things were wonderful, and all of a sudden, everything stopped. And frankly, at that point, there was so much fear and so much unknown, teachers were paralyzed and afraid, and as were parents. And we've come a long, long way. We know a lot more, we have a lot more understanding and tools. And so I just want to say, I know this is a depressing time, but keep in mind, two things going on here. We're not closing school, and when I'm finished with this, Dr. Mohol's going to come up and talk to you about our extracurricular programs, and we're not, we're not giving in, and we need you not to give in. We need you to know that we're on our way back, and we're going to get there. So I have been working quietly. How I spent my vacation was very interesting. I was doing research, stewarding my mom to her next world, and trying to figure out how to develop a set of positions that we think would shift the way we approach fighting COVID and get more than Harrison to buy into it. I've presented it to the lower Hudson Council. Hopefully, they'll endorse it by week's end. But we want to see big shifts that would, I think, change and simplify, and also keep kids safe, how we go forward. So these are the things that we are focusing on as a, as a school board. What's the path forward to normalized schooling? We are expecting, and I've given them some examples off the record, I don't want to put my recommendation for metrics on them, I'm not the medical expert, let them, but we want metrics to reduce restrictions, AKA masks, but other things as well, social distancing. Our ultimate goal is always to limit in-person learning loss. We want to be able to focus our district's resources instead of having my principals work on contact tracing, maybe spend time with kids, maybe spend time observing teachers, get back to professional development, all the things they do so well. And ultimately, I think what we're proposing is going to make it safer, not less safe. Now, people always say to me, well, you know, that's your thinking. I'm a research practitioner, but I'm not a medical professional. So I went to people that are. You know, I have two daughters, and I love all three of their pediatricians, and I never felt like their pediatricians had a secret agenda. I think most pediatric folks are devoted to kids. So this comes out of the American Academy of Pediatrics. These are their six objectives. Interesting to see, number one, right? Adequate and timely COVID testing resources must be available and accessible. I share with you a success we had this year. You may or may not recall this, but back in November, there was no such thing as test-to-stay in the state of New York. And just before the Thanksgiving break, I proposed that we should push this forward. It was adopted, and the state put it in place before Christmas. The other concern we had was that it wasn't accessible for most kids, because their districts couldn't afford it. And over the Christmas break, the governor provided tests for every single school district to implement test-to-stay. That started in this room with your help. So there are some things, but what I'm talking about here is much bigger than that. You know, somebody wrote to me not very long ago, who said, in, in Britain, they didn't ever have masks in schools. Not true, but partly true. What did Britain do differently is they started testing from day one of everybody. And it wasn't a local decision, it was a national decision. And when you have that kind of data, as Brian said, you're able to use your resources to isolate those people that are sick and keep everybody else living a normal life. The other thing I think is, I smile when I read it. Number two, strategies should be revised and adapted depending on the level of viral transmission and test positivity rate. Now, please notice the two words I underline. Throughout the community and schools. Those of you who've been here for a long time know that I've been yelling that we don't want to base our decisions on the positivity rate of Westchester County. And frankly, I don't want to base it on the positivity rate of the Harrison community. I want to base it on the positivity rate in each of our schools. As we know, there is very little transmission in schools. So that's not Lou Wool saying that, that's the American Academy of Pediatrics. Number four, change your mind. Policies should adjust based on what's going on around you. What a unique idea. Here's the one that's driving us all crazy, everybody in this room tonight. Districts closely communicate and coordinate with state and local public health officials and medical experts. We struggle to get an answer to what day of the week is it? Who's in charge? Is it Section 1 in athletics? Is it the Westchester County Department of Health? Is it the New York State Department of Health? Is it the New York Public Health High School Athletic Association? It can't be everybody. So there needs to be a meeting of the minds. Provide mental health support to students. Do you know what the single biggest challenge to mental health has been throughout the COVID pandemic? It's not masks. It's not coming to school. You've got to get kids in school, every day, all day. And we're going to do that. But part of the problem we have right now is, all of the resources that I have are focused on contact tracing. So what if we could shift that emphasis? Finally, this is the American Pediatric Association, not me, they recommend COVID-19 vaccination for all children, adolescents, five years of age and older, who do not have contraindications. So part of that is access. If you're a working family, it's hard to go out, take your day off. That's why we have worked hard to make clinics available in the evening for those of you that want it. So we are actually, in some ways, following these things. So here are the recommendations I'm going to be making to the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Education and the Governor tomorrow. I would like weekly PCR testing for every person in a public school, employee or not, students included, if you consent. You must consent. But what would that do? I believe it would simplify everything. It means, let's forget about test-to-stay. Let's forget about quarantine. If you're sick, stay home. We'll give you a test. If you're not sick, you come back. Everybody would know, and we would know not just once in a while, when we come on vacation. And we would know not just once in a while when we come on vacation, but constantly. What would that do? It'd allow us to eliminate contact tracing. Contact tracing, why is contact tracing a waste of time? Well, we didn't know this at the beginning, but we know it now. If there's no cross infection by and large, or it's a very small percentage, do we really want to focus the majority of our resources on contact tracing? No. Let's do something different. Let's find a way, just like we couldn't do antigen testing. Well, guess what? We could. Maybe we can provide a little tube for everybody that goes to school here. They give a saliva sample once a week, and we'd know who's infected. And we'd be able to help those families isolate and make virtual learning available to them. And that would give the state education department or the Department of Health one metric to say, hey, there's hardly any infection in that school district. Can we reduce some of the restrictions? Probably yes. This is an easy one. How about making the rules apply to all school districts the same way? So that Eastchester and Harrison and Rye, we're all following one set of rules. There's one, it shouldn't be up to Dr. Ladwig to come up with a form to figure out how to provide attestation that your child can return to school. That should be a state form. It should be in every pediatric office. Fill it out, send it in. We don't have to worry about it. Let's give the medical responsibility back to the medical community. Is number six, increase vaccination and booster access? That's the recommendation that's been made to us by every medical professional, and we're going to continue to try to advance that. And the same standards, I skipped five, for COVID-positive staff and students because Test to Stay does not align with the new quarantining rules. Let's standardize what we expect. So how's that going to happen? If you want to know here the painful details, weekly PCR testing, it would be given to everybody. It would be required that the state give us the federal and state funds to do it. I don't think it's that big a lift. It's clinically based. You need to participate. The state would probably say, in order to know what your infection rate is at district, you need a certain standard, 75, 85, I don't know. And then if they did that, it would be a metric I would push on the next slide to say, how can we eliminate contact tracing? Well, we eliminate contact tracing because we have a much better idea who's sick. We're not relying on you sat next to me. That would save us so much time. And if mental health is really our concern, you need to let me free up resources so principals can reestablish relationships with kids and teachers. That would be a tremendous release and give our principals the ability back to manage the day-to-day of their schools. By the way, I listed for you how each of our goals aligns with the American Pediatric. So I'm not reading these slides unless you want to die of boredom. Here are some of the things. The second part of this slide says, eliminate contact tracing if a school district can't. Provide the testing. Maintain multi-layered mitigation. What does that mean? Social distancing if the infection rate is higher. We already have air filtration, all the things we're doing. Wash our hands, keep the schools clean. We would still maintain contact tracing. We have some children who cannot, under any circumstances, wear a mask. They're just not physically able to do it. We would contact trace in those cases. They'd be rare instances. We should always have exceptions. And there may be exceptions even in this environment where it makes sense to contact trace. But it wouldn't be a regular occurrence because we'd have this rich data saying, the vast majority of our kids are healthy, and we know that. We would eliminate the requirement for school districts to report fully vaccinated close contacts to the health department. That's what we do now. And we don't even know at this point whether or not your child is vaccinated or not, which would save us an enormous amount of time. And also, thank you to the parents who have started to help us do that. It saves principals hours and hours. Because if your child is vaccinated, he doesn't have to be contact traced. If we could do those things, I think we'd be in a very strong position to say to the commissioner, set some standards to get masks off the face of kids. We're doing PCR testing. Here's our vaccination rate. We've made vaccine clinics. You set the standards. If we achieve them, let us roll it back. But most importantly, do not require us to measure whether or not we can do that against the community. The community is a very different place. We control the environment of our schools. If our infection rates, according to CDC, are between 1 and 4.99, we're low transmission. We're almost low transmission all the time. If we can achieve that, and our parents participate and vaccinate kids because they choose to, those two things ought to give us an easing of constraints, which ultimately leads to normalcy in the not-too-distant future. I'm going right along because I don't want to spend too much time on this because I don't want you to lose, lose me. I'm skipping to regulations, guidelines, acceptable to all school districts, applicable. Right now, Rockland County does something different than Duchess County. Rensselaer County does something different. Where Adam Gutterman lives, his school district does something different. The problem that that creates for all of us is parents start looking around and saying, why are you doing this and you not doing it? It puts school districts in a role we don't want. I don't want to decide the rules. I'll help you figure them out. And they need to make sense, but they need to apply to everybody. These are public schools in the state of New York. So if the standard is good in one county, it should be good in every county. And that is the job, I believe, of the New York State Department of Health. Right now, we've had a lot of complaints about parents who say, why do you require a doctor's order? Why do you not require a doctor's order? Why can't I give the test at home? And why do you not accept the fact that I say my kid is positive? We do accept it. But for reporting purposes, we can't. So unify your expectations so that parents aren't asking us, why does this make no sense? Or why is it so difficult for me? I can't get a test. My kid is better. He's testing negative. Why can't I bring him back to school? I don't know is not a good answer. So my work tomorrow is to try to push for, let's figure out a reasonable answer that makes sense and keeps kids in school. The last bullet is obviously the easiest one. We're going to continue to try to get you access to vaccinations and booster shots if you want them. And we're also going to request that the state at least allow us to know which of the children in our schools are vaccinated. Because that will give us the, the answer to the other metric that I think. They're going to require two metrics to take masks off. One is going to be, how many people are vaccinated? The second is, what's your infection rate? So the answer to that could be, think about how simple our life can be. Everybody takes a PCR test. What else do you have to do? Well, if you stick, stay home. That's what you have to do. And if you don't feel well, go to your doctor. He can decide whether or not it's safe for you to come back. End of story. Everybody else comes back to school. We're able to actually report a real infection rate instead of a fiction. And if our vaccination rates continue to soar, and they're growing exponentially, whatever standards the state sets, we can then say, what is the reward for low infection? I'm tired of fluffy answers. I'm hopeful that this will push the envelope to get us to my first slide, which is back to normal. So we don't want to overreach. We don't want to make it complicated. We actually want to make it simple. And the one thing that the American Pediatric, the American, I always do this, Rob, Academy, demands is, follow the science. Well, everybody said PCR testing is the most accurate. So why not make it available? By the way, in the places that have had great success in keeping schools open and masks off kids, that's what they started with. They did one thing we can't do, which is pod. We can't pod to 10. And in those cases, the problem there is, everybody that is in that pod gets quarantined. So you get extraordinary numbers of quarantine. Test everybody. Test everybody. So that's where we're going. I think we have a good chance of achieving some of that. I will update you soon. And if we are successful, Madam President, in getting my organization, which is 83 superintendents, but we are a big area and people pay attention to us, that'll get more traction than just Harrison doing it. But either way, we're going to put together a voter voice campaign. All that means is, there'll be a letter-writing campaign on our website. You push a button, it routes it to your legislator. You say, this is what I hope you support. And that gets people's attention. So I want you to know, your kids are coming to school. Harrison's going to do everything it can to bring back normalcy to your children's lives. And we have not rested for one minute, nor will we. We're very excited to see your kids in school. Probably the biggest lift we get is coming to school in the morning and seeing the faces of your kids doing good things. So before I conclude, any questions from the board on that?
No questions, but one comment, Lou. You showed those images at the beginning of, of your presentation. So first, thank you for your advocacy and for your thinking and your leadership.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things that we have not noted in our expressions of gratitude is our curriculum and instruction and the model of learning, the things that we love to talk about, that we have been distracted by, and the resilience of our program. Because with our advocacy to keep kids in school, what I'm seeing and I'm hearing is the progress that kids are making coming out of the pandemic and the isolation in the last six to eight months is exponential. And that is due, yes, to the efforts of our teacher, but also our curriculum model, our differentiated learning instruction model, everything that we commit to, to making sure every kid is supported. And that is still in place in spite of all of these conditions. And we owe a huge debt of gratitude to so many that contributed to that, that we are in that place. Because that is not necessarily occurring in districts across this country right now.
Well, thank you for saying that. And that's a perfect segue to what I want to talk about with Michael and Lisa. But are there any other questions from the board about this particular presentation? Are we good? Lisa, could we just start with extracurricular? And I want to talk to two of you to talk a little bit about IB and the summer program. Because, thank you, Dennis, because COVID seems to consume us, but it really doesn't. It's just something we have to get through. So Lisa, we, I asked you if you wouldn't mind to, to meet with all of our performing arts teachers who are struggling this month to figure out how to keep things going. And you're going to give us an update on what we're able to do for the month of January? Dr. Lisa Mulhull, those who don't know at home, is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
Thank you. So we looked at this, the calendar, and the post-high school planning and the NYPD IB information night for the high school that took place already were both made webinars. The good news about that is if you missed them or you missed something that was said at one of those, you can go back and watch them. And the eighth grade parent orientation coming up next week will also be virtual. We also are supposed to have our small ensemble performance this month. And so those performances will be incorporated into spring concerts that will be happening later in the year. So students will still have the opportunity to perform. And our Harrison Avenue spaghetti dinner and Preston's bingo night will also be taking place in the spring. I think we had good models for those in the spring last year. And so hopefully, we can replicate them. As well as the winter planetarium, we're going to try to find a time and spot for that as well.
Great. And I just want to say that one of the things I want to point out is, it's very simple for our teachers to give in and just say, let's do it virtually. To a person, they continue to persist at trying to find ways to put kids on these stages and people in these seats. Now, it isn't going to be ideal, but it's going to happen. And Lisa, also KJK, I know, the Elementary Enrichment Committee sponsors that work. And even though it's going slowly, it's going. Tell me a little bit about that.
So we're working to make sure, I think part of the challenge with that is as dates change, it's a ripple effect. So it's a series of very carefully stacked dominoes for every piece of it. And honestly, if you just come and enjoy the performance, I had no idea of all of the small pieces that are in place and all of the moving parts and all of the people that are involved in making things look like they just happened. So we're trying to just go through decision by decision, figure out which things we can move by making that move, what the domino effect is, and how we can make some adjustments. So we're hoping that the Parsons performance for KJK was supposed to be the first one. And we're hoping to reschedule that. And we're, we're not exactly sure what the date will be yet, but we'll have that very shortly.
Yes, and thank you for Herculean efforts on, on. Now, while you're there, I don't know if you, Michael and Lisa, would you both give us a brief update on?
Folks don't know that we are pursuing an application. We actually have already applied to become an IB primary years program. There's an enormous amount of effort and energy that goes in. You have to train your teachers before you're eligible to do it. And that kind of hit a little bit of a wall with all of the absentees. But so where are we in that process? Michael? Lisa? Michael? They work together, don't they?
We do, very closely. And so Mr. Greenfield has been taking the lead on setting up all of our IB training. And we were supposed to have our second round of teacher training take place this month just out of, you know, respect for all of the efforts, the Herculean efforts to make sure that classes are covered. We shifted all of the people who were supposed to attend in January, and we already had dates set up in March. So they will participate then. And we're going to look for some additional, hopefully, late spring dates so that we would stay on track. If not, we'll try to catch up in the summer. But there's a lot of positive buzz, and we're really excited to move forward. We think it's more important to do it at the right time than to rush and try to do it now.
I couldn't agree with you more because teachers would have been overtaxed anyway, and the buildings wouldn't have been able to function. I know Adam and Valerie would agree with that. The, the other thing I just want to remind people of, you know, you guys experience things when they happen. And unfortunately for my team, they experience them months before they happen. We're in the midst of planning our summer programs right now. Do you want to just talk about what broadly we're thinking about?
Sure. We are, you know, looking at everything, the amazing events that took place last summer and trying to evaluate how they went. I think we got amazing, amazingly positive feedback. And it was a highlight of my entry into the district to be able to visit all of those programs and to see them in action. And so we're thinking about how to move forward and what pieces should stay, what pieces should be adjusted, and how can we provide another incredible summer experience for all of our students.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. A couple of other things that just, before we shift, you, I haven't had a chance to give a law, an update in a very long time that isn't COVID-focused, so I just want to savor this for a minute. We've also got a lot of great things going on in facilities. We're going to be doing some pretty important repairs to the Preston School to make sure that the gymnasium's not flooding any longer. That's a big deal. We're moving ahead with our HVAC air filtration upgrades from our state and federal grants. You'll be seeing lots of work happening this summer in this building on the second floor, at Harrison Avenue, in the auditorium, Purchase School, Preston School. Now, Preston's not on this summer. It's the other repair that's going on in Preston. High School is going to get it in the large gym, AC, and in the new math wing. So lots of things going on to improve air filtration in the district. The other project that I'm really excited, that's a sort of a pet peeve of mine. I love the Parsons Memorial Schools. It's the most beautiful, amazing building. But it has this weird bridge that connects the two pieces. Well, there's actually three extensions, but two of them. And it doesn't allow the building to be handicapped accessible on one full side. So we literally have to lower the floor to make the building handicapped accessible so that the entire first and second floor will be able to access the new elevator. That's a major project slated for this summer. All of those things are going on in the midst of everything else I just told you about. So I, I say again, with a great deal of pride, quite honestly, that I'm extremely proud of the incredibly dedicated, talented people that work here and work for your children about as hard as they can every day. And I mean every day. So that's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the personnel agenda. I will take that on consent unless there are any objections. Seeing no objections. Item one, certificated personnel. A, resignation. B, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. C, extra compensation appointments, SED clearance received. D, change of status. Roman numeral two, non-certificated personnel. A, resignation. B, resignation for purpose of retirement. C, regular appointment, SED clearance received. D, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. E, change of status. Roman numeral three, other. A, acknowledgement of student/teacher. B, contracted services/provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none.
So I just wanted to congratulate, this is my fault, Geraldine Hill, cleaner at the Harrison Avenue School, wish her the very best, we'll see her in June, but she's leaving, so congratulations to her.
Moving on to the administrative report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item one, approval of Harrison High School varsity cheerleading team field trip to Orlando, Florida to attend the National High School Cheerleading Championship. Item two, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item three, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the finance report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item one, 2021-22 appropriation transfers. Item two, treasurer's report, December 2021. Item three, quarterly report for the extra classroom activity funds. Item four, approval of ARP funding for capital improvements. Item five, contract extension, RFB number 21/22-19 trash liners. Item six, disposal of equipment. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. That concludes the January 12 business meeting, our next regularly scheduled business meeting is on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School, just a reminder that school is closed this coming Monday in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, so we hope everyone enjoys a quiet day at home. And with that, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.